To order and I'd ask everyone to please rise for the singing of our national anthem.
Thank you, please be seated.
All right, council, we have our agenda before us. Item 1.0 is additions to the agenda. We have three items, 7.8, the request for funding for the Mac Center, 7.9, which has just been distributed, community event grant application for Drayton Valley Minor Baseball Tournament, and 7.10 is the, is an in-camera item. And so with that, I would take a motion to adopt the agenda with those additions. Councillor Shuler, all in favor? That is carried, thank you. Item 3.0, or yeah, sorry, item 3.0, corrections or amendments to the June 24, 2015 regular meeting in council minutes, any corrections or amendments there? Councillor Bossert, no? All right, very good. It's, this is a good day. Item 4.0 is adoption of the June 24, 2015 regular meeting in council minutes. May I take a motion to adopt those? Councillor Bossert, thank you, all in favor? That is carried. Item 5.0, under delegations, we have a special guest with us today. He's no stranger to our community, he's been our Member of Parliament for a short while, but has traveled to Drayton Valley on a number of occasions to meet with myself and others. Before I ask Mr. Oglinski to speak, I just want to add a small editorial comment. Upon becoming our Member of Parliament, Mr. Oglinski shortly afterwards reached out to ourselves and requested a meeting with me to discuss issues of concern to Drayton Valley. The first thing out of his mouth was, "How can we help?", which for a municipal politician is a refreshing and delightful thing to hear. So, without further ado, Mr. Oglinski.
Thank you, Glenn. Councillors, Mayor, Staff, Staff Sergeant. I'm just going to start off just a little bit about myself, like Mayor indicated, I've only been here approximately seven months now. Being elected as your representative federally has been a great honor for me, and a lot of people are asking me as I'm traveling around the riding, "How are you enjoying it?", and all I can say is, every day I'm there, I'm enjoying it a little bit more. It's exciting. I think the fact that I've started to get to know the Members of Parliament on the Hill, and I've started to get to know the Ministers, where I can now approach them in a more comfortable manner and just say, "Leona, we need to talk", or "Kelly, we need to talk", it's made it much easier and much more enjoyable, because I know that I can get my message across to them and get their help where I need it within the riding. It's a large riding, and I would just like to speak about it for one minute. The Prime Minister will call an election this fall, and he probably will drop the writ on September 12 through 13, and he will call an election for October 19. We're all aware of that, and most of us are basically in a semi-campaign mode right now. Those that have been nominated as new candidates can actually go out and canvass and say, "Vote for me." Those that are in current seats like myself cannot do that until the writ is dropped. But we can go around the riding and introduce ourselves, talk to people, ask questions. What can we help you with? What can we do better as a government? And that's what I will be doing for the full, complete summer. I've committed this whole year to basically let the people get to know me better, and we get to know you folks better. The riding changes as soon as the writ is dropped. I will lose half of my riding, which will lose Swan Hills, Fox Creek, White Court, Barhead, Forte Sinoboyne, Onaway. I will keep Sangudo, I will keep Mayor Thorpe, and then I will come south of your fine community, and I'll go all the way down to Caroline, and I take in Thoresby, Warburg, Breton, and Rocky Mountain House, and Nordick. So I've got a whole new riding that I do not know anybody in. I shouldn't say that, I have met Mayor Fred down there, we've had a couple of good discussions as Glenn and I have, and I have gone to one, two community functions down there already, just two, community hall-type functions where I can meet a lot of people at one time. I will be spending a fair amount of time coming and going through this community this summer, as I go south to introduce myself and get to know the people down there, and let those people get to know me. Plus, we have the riding already that I'm in, the, you know, from Grand Cash, Jasper, Hinton, been spending some time in those communities already, and typically July 1, I hit Hinton, Jasper for parades, and then Edson, so it was a really hectic one day, but it got it all done, met a lot of people, it was a lot of fun. So that's what my summer's going to be like, and it's going to be very, very interesting meeting all the people and getting feedback from them. And then, as I say, probably on the 13th, 12th to 13th, we'll be in a campaign mode, asking you to vote for me. So that's the best I can do at this time. Message from government, of course, government of the House rose on the 22nd, and they sent us all back to the writings to do exactly what I'm doing, and that's happening across the country, except for the Ministers. The Ministers are traveling extensively across Canada at the present time. As you know, and I do apologize here, I was hoping to bring Kelly Leach here on Thursday, but the juggling people in Ottawa thought that she should be in Fort McMurray, and I don't know why, I think this is a heck of a lot better community than Fort McMurray, because it's not in my riding, but she was sent to Fort McMurray on short notice, and we had to cancel here, and I do apologize on her part, and she asked me to do that. She did get to Jasper, we had a quick coffee break on Hinton on our travels back to Edson, and she had an evening function in Edson, a delightful lady. She's promised to come back, and when I get her back here, we'll get her over here. But just to give you an example, the Ministers are asked that they have to hit at least 55 writings each during the summer, so that means at least 110 days that they're going to be on the road, and she's traveled to 88 different communities since the 1st of January. So our Ministers are very busy in this country, they're just traveling and representing the country, speaking on behalf of the Members in those writings to bring our message along. As a government, we're very proud, because Monday, we're going to, universal child care benefits are coming out, and it's going to be the largest payment of funds in the history of Canada on Monday. There's $3 billion worth of checks going out to families across Canada to help with child care benefits, because we feel as a government that the money is best in the hands of the parents who know where to best spend the money for their families, and this is part of our program that we've been going with ongoing this year, and it's the big payments coming out on Monday. As a riding, we have seen some significant funding announcements. If you heard last, 10 days ago, I made a big announcement in Jasper of $211 million for Jasper National Park alone. It's part of a $2.8 billion infrastructure program that we have across Canada for all of our national parks, and the reason Jasper got a fair chunk is that the highway system is deplorable, it needs to be upgraded, the amount of traffic coming and going, either Highway 16 or coming up from Calgary, we need to improve the highways before we have some major fatalities on there, so $98 million of that is going to improving the highway structure right through the parks, from Banff to Jasper and Highway 16, upgrading the signage and stuff like that. The rest is going for programs within Jasper Park, improving camping facilities, the needs of the public. With over 2 million people living on both ends of our national parks, we need to address the concerns of these two parks, and that's why the funding was put that way. The federal government has also taken a very large step, and I think that's a role that your community probably has some interest in, is tourism. We are really going after the US market with our Canadian dollar at its present setting to the US dollar. It's a great opportunity to bring the Americans here, and the Americans are very interested in coming, and we think it's worthwhile investing. I believe we have approximately $4 million in advertising this year alone across the United States, encouraging people to come to Canada, and a big part of Canada for most Americans is the Rocky Mountains, and I think that we, as communities surrounding those areas, can all benefit from getting involved in programs, and there will be some funding available through tourism programs and stuff like that. And as we get that information, I'll make sure I get it to the town here so that you can take advantage, along with everybody else. It'll be competitive, and there'll be lots of people trying for the funding, but I think every community should try, and hopefully we can get as much out as we can into the riding. But there's going to be some great opportunities in tourism. Overall, the major infrastructure funding, which you're probably waiting to hear what's happening in your community, I can't give you an answer on that right now. I did call Ottawa on Thursday, because when I met with Jasper, I met with him, and I met with Grand Cash, "Where's the money?", and so, first of all, I went to the MLA and says, "Where's the money?", and he says, "What money?", and I said, "Well, this isn't helping", and I says, "Who in the government do I contact?", "I don't know." So then I contacted Ottawa, "Who are you guys dealing with?", and they say, "We don't not know." So we're a little bit of a stalemate right now. So I went back to my local MLA, and Eric, and I asked Eric if he would get on with his government to make sure that we start getting a contact person in there so these infrastructure grants and funds can be issued to the communities, because we're running out of time for a lot of the projects. And it's unfortunate, we had an election, and things aren't in place here in the province to see that funding coming out to the municipalities, but our, our end of it is trying to get the money to the province, but we're having difficulty on who to get it there, and they're not exactly sure who's getting it, because I believe a lot of the senior bureaucrats that were there and were in charge of those things have been terminated, and there's new people, and they're not exactly sure what they're doing. Hopefully, we're going to get that resolved here within the next few days, so you people can hear things on that back. I don't want to go into too much more, but if anybody got any questions for me that I might be able to try to answer, the one thing I do want to say before I step down, and then I'll just quickly go through a little bit of my background history. I was very fortunate to spend 35 years with my friend back here as an RSCMP officer, and retired as the Staff Sergeant. I was managing an officer's detachment for three years, but that was under the agreement with the commanding officer, E Division at the time. After retiring from the RSCMP, I spent nine years doing what you fine folks are doing right now, as a Mayor and a Councillor, and on the county for three years. So I have a very soft spot for you guys. I will listen, and if people want advice, I will try to give the advice and the experiences I had as the Mayor of the city of Fort St. John, I also sat on a number of boards for the province of British Columbia, and I was one of the founding fathers that initially got the federal government to reduce its regulatory control on immigrant workers and allow us to bring in foreign workers who are not skilled. Very sad to say that the program got way out of control, and it was never meant to go that way when we originally negotiated that back in 2004 and 2005. But it is being revised. A lot of hardships across our riding, doesn't matter what community, or a lot of businesses are suffering, because we cannot, they cannot, get enough workers, and it's something that your Alberta caucus has taken to the Minister at least four times since I've been there. The Minister's fully aware of our concerns. Alberta is not alone, British Columbia is facing very similar situations, where we just can't seem to get Canadians to come out and take the baseline jobs or the early jobs, especially in the food industry. And it's a shame, because that industry is one of the best learning blocks for a young person getting into the workforce. They learn how to work with people, with money, interact with other people, and it's a shame that we are not encouraging our youth to get involved that way. And I know that's one of the things we were talking about just prior to leaving Ottawa, is taking a look at a complete strategy when we get back there, and how we can encourage parents and young people to get out and work, get out and make that step to McDonald's, to A&amp;W's, to Dairy Queens, and get those basic, good working ethics, and then move on from there, because if we keep relying on foreign workers, it's just not going to work. We need to get young people out there to get those basic skills, and it's one thing that we are going to need to address. Canadians need to realize that we need to start at those entry-level jobs, we can't start at the top, or at least in the middle, it's just not right. And I'd just like to speak a little bit about our immigration policy. We've taken a couple hits in the media recently, and I don't think it's fair, because I just, I sit on the Canadian Immigration Board, and I've got some statistics that I never knew, and over the last 10 years, we've brought in a minimum of 250,000 landed immigrants a year. This year, we were actually going for a record 280,000 landed immigrants a year. That's not counting foreign workers, that's just counted landing immigrants that were brought in, people that have the background, knowledge, or the experience to come here, or they are just applying to become Canadian citizens. We also, every year, for the last 10 years, have brought in over 200,000 foreign workers in a year on that rotational basis, and we also bring in, on the average, 130,000 foreign students that come into Canada, of which a fairly large percentage decide to stay. They like the style of our country, and they like the lifestyle, and they think they can see a future in, and they remain. So we are constantly in that 250,000 to 300,000 range of people that are staying, with our foreign workers that are applying to stay, with our students that are applying to stay, and the ones that we're already bringing in. So I think it's a great tracker. We're also, statistics show that if we don't do that, Canada won't survive. We're just not making enough babies ourselves, that's what's a very simple terminology, and we need these people to build our country, and we've needed ever since our country started. It's nothing new, it's just something that has to keep going, and I think it's a great record that this government has done. And in closing, I just want to tell you that I'm sorry my wife Nancy couldn't come today, she has met Mayor Glenn and Manny, we've had a few discussions this summer, but when people elected me, I keep saying they elected both of us, because she's been a big help to me, she's worked for a couple Ministers over the years, she's worked in their local riding offices, and she has a wealth of knowledge about the federal government and provincial government, and she's been really gracious when I'm in Ottawa, she's attended a number of functions around the riding and appeared for me. So I keep telling people, and I'm lucky to have her, the riding's lucky to have her, because you're getting two for the bang of one, and she's quite willing to come out and help whenever she can. So, back to, anybody got any questions for me?
Thank you very much, Jim. I hope you don't mind the informality, but I, having had the opportunity to chat with you a few times, it's, it is apparent that, that you are getting out and about in the riding, and what did you say, seven months since you've been elected? You've been here quite a number of times on, to meet with, me with county representatives and others in the community, and we look forward to that continuing. Do, on, through your office, I hope you can extend the invitation to Minister Leach to, when she does find the time in her schedule, and no one has to apologize to me about changes in schedules, it, because I'm no stranger to that myself, but when she does have the opportunity to come visit us, please let her know that the, the door is always open here, and we would love to receive her. I had the opportunity to hear her speak at the FCM Convention in Edmonton just in June, very eloquent, very articulate, and thoughtful, and so we would look forward to receiving her here.
Did she know where the girl?
Yes, from Fort McMurray, right? Yeah. Yeah, that's, they probably needed her to perform some kind of intervention up there, that's.
You know, just to speak of the caliber of lady we're talking about here, she is a doctor, she's an orthopedic surgeon, she continues not her practice, but she volunteers her time in three hospitals in Ottawa to keep herself current in surgery and in her medical profession. At the Nepal disaster, she went there and spent 10 days doing surgery for victims of broken legs and limbs and stuff like that. I don't know where she gets the time, I asked her the other day on the road, "What do you do for sleep?", and she said, "Five hours a day is about average, the rest she just gives to the country."
It's just a waste after that, eh? Well, again, thank you so much for your remarks, thank you for, for joining us here today. We look forward to future visits, we look forward, of course, to the Building Canada Fund announcement, which I anticipate will be sometime before September 12-ish.
We sure hope so. I'm hoping that we're going to have it settled probably by the end of this month, maybe the early part of August.
Very good.
Because there's some communities that are really desperate.
Yeah, ours is one, yeah. Just to issue that reminder once again. So thank you once again, and I understand Christina's arranged a little bit of a tour of some of our facilities in the community, and we'll meet you again a little later on. And I'd open it up to council, if there are any questions, comments, Councillor Bossert.
Thank you, Your Worship. Good morning, sir, nice to have you here in Drayton Valley on such a beautiful morning. I've been on council for just over six years, six and a half years, and one of the main passions that I continue to have as a councillor is to see housing brought into communities that's affordable and accessible to all members of the community. There have been programs in the past from the federal government that assisted smaller communities such as ours in housing projects, and we haven't, we've heard that that pool of funding is due to dry up very soon, and that no new programming or new funding has been put in place. So as we come into an election here in the next few months, I would hope that you could take back to Ottawa the message that rural Alberta is still in grave need of federal support for accessible housing in smaller communities. We, the pressure is off of us right now in the, for the short term for housing, we have a little bit of a reprieve with change of oil prices, as I'm sure you've seen in other communities, but we know that that's a cyclical event, and that within a short amount of time, that pressure for all services in communities is going to be back on us, and housing is paramount. Our communities can't grow without the basic needs being met for our, for our residents, and housing is, in my mind, is number one. So I would hope that you can catch the ear of the Minister and take the message back that small communities really do need the support of the federal government for housing their communities.
Anything further? All right, well, thank you very much, and, and we will, as I said, we'll meet again later after we've had a bit of a tour, and, and thanks to Christina for arranging that, and thank you so much for joining us. We'll do this again.
Oh, we will, we'll do it a lot more, and I've left you all my cards, if you have a message, just feel free anytime to phone me. Sometimes I can't get back for one or two days because I'm on the road, but I will get back, that is a promise. All right?
Thanks so much. Next up, we have Staff Sergeant Callahou to give the RSCMP May-June policing report.
Good morning, how's everyone today?
Very good, thanks.
Just tip my magic binder of statistics. So today, I'm bringing up a couple things. First and foremost, though, I want to address, Councillor Shuler had a question regarding what other provincial stats was the last time I appeared before council. I have since found out what that was. As you can see, I printed off a large amount of different ones, but it goes through things like Securities Act, Child Welfare Act, Order's Act, the Dog Act, Family Relations Act, Fire Prevention Act, and it's, it's just a number of miscellaneous acts that entail what those numbers are. So as we're looking at the actual reports, we can go from there. So before you this morning, you have two months' worth of reports, you have January to May, and you have January to June. I'm going to kind of tackle both of them at the same time, because I think there's some similarities that, or some interesting numbers that probably would be able to be looked at. One of the first things that jumps out to me on page one of both reports is if you look at the January to May, and then the January to June results of our assaults, we appear to be on a downward trend. On the whole, you can see for the past five years, I'll use January to June just as, as our updates right now, 2011, we had 79 for this time, in 2011, 97 in 2012, 80 in 2013, in 2014, we had 72, this year we have 57. So that's encouraging numbers there with regards to person, crimes against persons, and it's something that we've seen some spikes up and down on it. There's, there's some other, there's some other statistics related to disposal abuse we'll get to in a moment, but on downward trend, and this is, when it comes to assaults in general, they're kind of hit and miss. Sometimes you have ways of it coming through, and it could be because of economics, it could be because of family situations, a number of things, but the point is, is that on a whole, it's good to see that number going down. If we go on to page two, one of the other things, and I'm very grateful on the last council meeting in June, that the bylaw was passed regarding the false alarms amendment. If you see on the numbers, one of the things here is, this tends to be one of our more time-consuming, I guess, calls would be the, dealing with false alarms. You can see here in, in 2015... In, in May, we were sitting at 115 for the year to go to. And then in June, we went to 147. So there's been, so if we look at the numbers, that's over, that's basically over one a day that we're heading to a false alarm complaint. So it does take up a amount of time for the member going from the office to attending the call. Sometimes we don't have key holders. We check the property, usually there's nobody there or else afterwards a key holder comes. And it does take up time to write up the file afterwards. And those are activities that we could be using on other things. Just as an example, a false alarm call, just to my estimation, if we go, go to the call, come back, write up the file, that's probably about 20 minutes. So you take times that by over 30. That's a significant amount of time that could be used on other enforcement activities.
Are these false alarms or, or this most recent spike that we've seen over the last month, is that mainly commercial or residential as well?
It's a mix, it's a mix of both. I could, normally when, when we see this, it is, it is commercial more, more prevalently than, than residential. However, with the companies that come through now and, and hook up the, you know, we have Vivint and different companies like that that walk through the community and they, they hook up people to these security systems. And then from there, you know, whether the door is left slightly ajar and sets off the alarm or different things like that, it all takes up time. And so when I originally came to council with that request, so again, very appreciative of that. And now we just have to kind of sort out a bit of the administration of how we're going to deal with the, with the other side. But again, just wanted to point out that the numbers do support this being brought forward. The only other thing, again, if you want us to look at the statistical comparisons, May 2011 to 2015, it's in blue on your sheets. It's about the fourth page in on both reports. And again, you can see here, looking specifically at the assault numbers, on the whole, we're seeing that downward trend again, which is, which is again, good to see. One other thing that I wanted to bring up with regards to, on the very last page of both of the reports, there's, there's a chart that goes through and it's, it's in the, it's in a landscape format on both sides. I wanted to kind of go over the numbers with regards to spousal abuse. During May, it was flagged as an issue. And again, when I see that, I have to take these with a bit of a grain of salt because these are the raw numbers that are plugged in. And so I do a bit of digging to find out what exactly is the issue in this case. For that, for the number of 83, 32 of those went to charge. So this is basically what's known as, as a scoring number. So it could be spousal abuse as defined by Family Violence Act. It could be spousal abuse charges laid. It could be spousal abuse, male or female offenders. So there's different categories that are all kind of all lumped together on that. So you have to kind of define whether or not there's actually been a charge laid on it or if it's been cleared on a different way. So it, it kind of, it shows it as an issue, but there's, there's more to it than that. Again, the next month in June, we had 44 charges laid, but it still shows that there's 97 scored. So some of those are unfounded, some of those were cleared, cleared otherwise, that there was a, an alternative resolution that wasn't actually, or there, or they were just, I had one that was actually scored as a unsolved, which is unfortunate. But the fact is, is that there's a number of different things that need to be looked at and before accepting the numbers as you see them. So besides that, before I move on to my, our yearly annual performance plan quarterly report, does anyone have any questions regarding the actual statistics that are in front of you today?
Counsel? Nope. Nope.
Okay. All right. Moving on then, our quarterly report. And this is something that the RCMP uses the fiscal year of April till the end of March of the next year. So it's kind of different than the rest of the world. But normally what we do is, we do quarterly reports and since the first quarter has elapsed during the July, so April, May and June has come and gone. The three priorities that were identified this year again was traffic, both enforcement as well as visibility, property crime suppression, and then crime reduction initiative basically with regarding prolific offenders. I can tell you that this quarter, as a whole, between ourselves, the county CPOs and our integrated traffic unit, there's a total of 726 tickets that were written this quarter. So that's encouraging numbers and it's, it's well within the mark of what we're looking at this year for enforcement and visibility. One of the other things that we're looking at is in the crime suppression area is reduction in motor vehicle theft and a reduction in break-in enters. So one of the things that we're using with that is patrol, patrol initiative towards our hotspot areas as well as the prolific offenders, which kind of ties into all this and the curfew checks. So, so far, this, this quarter, 10 vehicles that have been stolen this quarter and there's been 21 break-in enters. I guess I have to qualify that again by no amount of crime, it's a good amount of crime. But if we look at the reductions from last year, we're well within what we want to have for a reduction. And again, I think that's part and parcel to the increased patrols we're trying to do. We're utilizing a patrol log so we can track how many patrols we're doing in the area. Again, and I'll tie that into the third part, which again deals with prolific offenders. Unfortunately, we do have prolific offenders in this community. These offenders tend to, when they get on, when they get on a crime spree, they can be a one-person crime victim. And that's the unfortunate reality of that. With our offender checks, we did 21 offender checks this quarter. And of that resulted in five criminal charges for breaches of those conditions. So again, we are trying to keep on top of those fellows, or ladies, whichever that could be, and trying to make sure that they're abiding by those court mandated conditions and, and trying to keep them in check with, with those conditions that they're on right now. Some of the, of our prolific offenders unfortunately aren't on conditions right now. So it really comes down to us monitoring where those people are and what they're doing. And I've been encouraging the members when they're out on the roadways, you know, late at night, if there's people moving around, stopping and chatting with them, seeing what they're doing. People on bicycles out at late at night, you know. There's a saying sometimes that nothing good happens past 11:00 PM. Not to say that's the case with everything, but it's, you know, it's curious why people are sometimes out past, you know, in the 1, 2, 3 AM area wandering around the community. So I've asked my members to be curious, start to look at those things. And vehicles moving around, you never know what you're going to get. So with that, that's my quarterly report. If there's any questions on that.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
No questions, that must mean it's thorough.
Well, I look forward to keeping things going. So I'll let you know a lot of things go.
Thank you very...
And again, I have, one other thing I did want to mention is I do appreciate, I do get the odd email, you know, for hotspot problem areas. I know that the Omni Plex is one that was mentioned. So I've asked my members to start patrolling in there a little bit more heavily to suppress the stunting issues that I've heard about. And again, also by the high school is another hotspot area that was mentioned. So, you know, I do appreciate the feedback because it helps me direct where we need to go.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Item 6.0 is public time. I'm sensing there's no public ti, there are no public time issues. 7.0, decision items. 7.1, Councilor Schuler, the Fortis Franchise Fee Agreement.
Thank you, Your Worship. The existing 10-year franchise agreement, Bylaw 200635F, to allow Fortis Alberta exclusive right to deliver electricity within the town of Drayton Valley is set to expire December 31st, 2016. In 2012, the Alberta Utilities Commission gave approval to Fortis Alberta to apply a new franchise agreement template. This template was negotiated and approved by the AUMA. Fortis Alberta now wishes to renew their agreement with the town of Drayton Valley using the new template. Administration has reviewed the agreement and recommends its approval to replace the previous agreement for a 10-year term with options to extend for up to two five-year increments. Administration recommends increasing the franchise fee from 8% to 10%. The additional fees to provide funding to support clean energy initiatives and the Community Sustainability Plan. Therefore, I move the council give first reading to Fortis Electric Distribution System Franchise Agreement, Bylaw 201511F, which authorizes the new franchise agreement with Fortis Alberta and a franchise fee rate of 10%.
Thank you, Councilor Schuler. I'll, I'll ask Ron if, if, on behalf of administration, if there's any further comments. And then I'll invite Nikki from, and Nikki, I apologize profusely, but I don't remember your last name.
It's Nicole.
You know what? It's, it's complex in its simplicity. That's, that must be why I can't remember it or perhaps I'm just not with it today.
Sure. Sure. Thank you, Mayor McLean. Yeah, I, I invited Nicole to come here and explain everything about it. But basically, there's kind of a new revised franchise agreement, which has some terms, some clarified terms from the previous version. And so that's one of the reasons why we're proposing to have this new franchise agreement signed. And the other part was that we're proposing to increase the franchise fee from 8 to 10%, which basically has an effect about $1.38 per homeowner per month. And the idea is that that would raise additional funds to help with the Community Sustainability Plan. So I'll invite Nicole to maybe come to the podium and answer any questions.
And welcome.
I'm a little bit shorter than the last two guys here. So thank you, Your Worship, counsel. Just here again today to provide support to administration to answer any questions relative to the franchise agreement. Just a little bit of history, Councilor Schuler had explained it quite well, actually. In 2012, Adco Fortis and the AUMA had collaboratively worked on a standard agreement across the province. So this new agreement that is in place will be for all municipalities and it is standard, which is actually quite well. It provides us customer service levels. It provides processes put into place on paper, which is great for both the utility as well as the municipality. Essentially, what the franchise agreement has done is also clarified and cleaned up a lot of the terminology. The old agreement had a lot of unclear terminology, so this really cleaned that up, which is great as well. And then the only other thing is it added in the process, as I had mentioned. So there were some changes. I can give you sort of a highlight of some of the changes that I have found to be most beneficial for the municipalities I have worked with so far. So I'll just talk about a couple of them. The definition of work, it's Article 1Q. Basically, what that is, is in order for Fortis Alberta to go into the municipality and do some major work, we today will be notifying you in terms of providing prints and what we're going to be doing and so on. But the amount that we had as an approval process was $50,000. Well, as you know, prices have increased, things have increased, so we have moved that to $100,000. That really doesn't get us very far, honestly. About six poles is about $100,000, once we do the work and so forth. So it's, it's not significant. But what I want to mention is that you guys are always going to be notified regardless whether it's approved or not. That notification process will always be in place. So there's nothing that you won't know what's happening. So that was a, kind of a big hitter for us. The process for the franchise fees, as you may be aware, you are able to reduce or increase your franchise fee on an annual basis. In the new agreement, we have a process in place, which is really good because we have dates that are associated to go to the AUC for having the municipality come back to us and for Fortis Alberta to provide to the municipality. So we have dates that are associated to that, which is good. Keeps everybody in kind of tact throughout the year. So that usually starts at the end of August. September 1st is typically when we would provide administration the, go forward to, here is what you have today, if you would like to increase it, if you would like to decrease it or leave it as such. So that is another big one that we had. Another one, major hitter, I would say, is in the new agreement, we are discontinuing the Rate 33 streetlights. Basically, what that means is 90% or 99% of the lights within municipalities are what we call a Rate 31, which is an invested light. If you were to install streetlights today, we would invest about $2,400 towards that light. So it does reduce the cost to those municipalities. Some municipalities have the developers who will receive that investment. 90% of the municipalities in Alberta take that investment to, for them, as they move forward, they take over those lights and pay for those monthly costs. A Rate 33 light is a non-investment light. Basically, what that means, and in Drayton Valley, you actually have about 40 of them. So I'm in the process of looking at if we can purchase that investment and then take those over as a whole. But basically, what that means is we will change a light bulb on the particular 40 lights that you have in town that is a Rate 33. And because it's not invested, that's all we do. So if it gets hit by a car, if it is rusting, if any of those things are happening with those particular lights, then that would be up to the municipality to take care of. So this is where we would like to be able to have no more of those non-investment lights so that we could own them as a whole and do the maintenance, do the work and basically take care of them from installation to death, if you will. Now, that doesn't mean that you can't have non-standard lighting. A non-standard lighting is basically if you wanted to have a special light for your downtown location or, or specialized type of lighting, we still have that option available. That does not go away. So it really is not much of an impact to the municipalities is what we feel as we would take care of all of the lights. So if the lights go out, you know how to call Fortis. So if at all any questions, please feel free to interrupt because I'm kind of just rambling.
Yeah, this is good.
Perfect. And then the only other one that I really want to talk about is the dissolution. This is a brand-new insertion into the clause, into the franchise agreement. And this clause is basically aligns with the Section 97.2 of the Municipal Government Act. So if the town of Drayton Valley was to dissolve into the county, I doubt that would happen. But if it had, we, what would happen is your franchise agreement would still stay intact and the county would take that franchise agreement over. So still can continue to collect fees or have the same service level benefits and so forth. So, so as a whole, there is a summary of different changes, but I don't need to go through all of them unless you have any questions around those. So today, what I'm looking to do is to get the motion started for the new franchise agreement to be put in place. As this one will be expiring in 2016, I would be requesting for first or first and second reading. I provided a package to Ron Fraser to, which includes the two bylaws, which will be required to be signed at least for the first or first or second reading, and as well as an application letter to us to basically move forward with the new franchise agreement. And then it would be implemented for January 1st.
Very good. Thank you so much. And just for clarity, we have no immediate plans for dissolution.
Correct.
Any questions from council, administration? Is this about dissolution?
I was wondering, still, you know, when the outage happens, we don't have a way of knowing how long it's going to be, what's happening. We just happened last week, so I thought if we could get some, there was a system that they were going to let us know and that didn't happen, so...
So what I've been doing, because I would be the one that would take care of that as part of being the Stakeholder Relations Manager for Town of Drayton. So anytime there is an outage, and you know, this can definitely be modified for sure. Basically, what would happen is soon as I'm notified, I usually will get in touch with Colette and provide her either a text or a phone call or what have you. And then it was up to her to communicate with you guys. Now, if that's not working, that's totally fine. We can develop a different process. I can contact you, Manny or Ron or, you know, Mayor. It doesn't matter as long as I know who to be in touch with because I will know right away, typically. And then as I give the updates, as I know what's happening. With the last outage, it was a pretty big one, so... With the last outage, it was a pretty big one, so I don't know if we can talk about that offline if you'd like, or if you have a different process that you would like to look at. I do want to mention, too, we just implemented last week a mobile app for our outages, so if you guys have a smartphone, definitely, it's a great way to communicate with Fortis in terms of letting us know if there's a streetlight out, or if you specifically have an outage at your home, or if there's a big outage. It's a great way to identify and communicate back to Fortis Alberta through this app. But again, I'm always available to you, so you know, you can call me or call our 310 wire and let them know of those outages. In terms of me communicating to you, I can definitely be available. We can talk about how you want to move that forward.
Does the app work on BlackBerries?
Very good question.
Yeah, I've learned.[652.04][652.04](laughing) Need to ask.
I believe it does, but if I'm wrong, you know, just go and try it and see if it works. It's supposed to be a smart app.
Yeah, yeah.
So, and it does have an outage map, which is very interesting. So if you have an opportunity to look at the outage map, you can see where those outages are and the restoration times and what's happening. On the weekend, it was lit up everywhere, so...
Right, that's good. And I think you're right. We can administratively, we can pursue with you discussing how the notification process might be amended or improved.
Just so you guys are aware, I am been working very closely with our contact center, because I truly believe there's a lot of people that use Twitter and Facebook, and social media is huge, and work gets out fast. So I've been on them. You guys need to be, you know, making sure things are on there when there's outages and so on. I mean, it's great that they notify me and I can notify, you know, the municipality, but to you, to get it out to your residents, that's a whole different ballgame. So, you know, I definitely encourage the social media as well.
Yeah.
Perfect.
So that's a situation where we could do a push notification through our app with some information.
Perfect. So if you have somebody that manages that app for you, you know, I can send them something as soon as I know with those updates and so on, so...
Right. Administration is duly taking note as we speak, and...
Perfect.
So we'll be in contact about that. Thank you so much. Any further questions, comments? Nope, thank you.
No problem.
So we have a motion before us. Any discussion on this motion, council? All right, all in favor? That is carried. 7.2, Councilor Bossert, Community School Resource Officer.
Thank you. The Town of Dreton Valley, Brazu County, Dreton Valley RCMP and the Wildrose School Division have been collaborating to develop an agreement which will allow for an RCMP member to be dedicated to the schools within Dreton Valley. This position would be referred to as the Community School Resource Officer. Currently, this position is budgeted for, however, there is an anticipated shortfall of $10,000 from the initial budget. This change is due to an amendment of scope to only include schools within the Dreton Valley. Brazu County Council has reviewed its budget and passed a motion on June 16th, 2015 Brazu County Council Meeting to increase its share of the cost up by $5,000 contingent on the Town providing the same. We have three options available. One is to approve the increase of budget, two is to table the item, and three is to refuse. Therefore, I move that council approve to contribute up to an additional $5,000 towards the Community School Resource Officer position and allow administration to proceed with agreement negotiations.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you. 7.3, Councilor Nado.
Thank you, Mayor. The Omniplex and the Mackenzie Center have several not-for-profit groups that host fundraising events annually. In order to ensure that these not-for-profit groups have security, knowing that their dates are held year-to-year for their events, a first rate of refusal policy for rentals has been developed. It is important that these organizations, to these organizations, that dates remain the same each year in order to help with the success and promotion of their event. Administration has also prepared the appropriate eligibility procedures that address the type and nature of the events that will be accommodated with this policy. Administration is recommending that council support this policy to allow annual community events to continue to be the benefit to the community. Before I make a motion, that Town Council approve the first rate of refusal policy A1415 for not-for-profit groups renting the Omniplex and/or the Mackenzie Conference Center.
Thank you, Councilor Nado. Any discussion on this motion? Councilor Long?
Thank you. Just, I think it's a clerical error in the policy. The second point, under program guidelines, dates must be consistent from year-to-year, i.e., 2nd of November every year should be EG. They do mean different things.
Councilor Nado?
I'm just wondering, in this document, it does talk about the Omniplex and the Mackenzie Conference Center specifically, but Clean Energy and Technology Center will be open in the fall. And I do understand that there's obviously potential in hosting events there, and would it suggest that we'll possibly amend that, or is that noted in consideration of the new building that will be coming forward, or rationale behind it not being included in this?
Yeah. I don't want to speak for administration on this. I'll let administration comment, but I suspect it has something to do with the fact that the building's not complete yet, and possible amendment to this policy might be forthcoming upon doors open. Have I got that right? That's an affirmative for the record. Okay, anything further? All right, we have a motion, all in favor? That is carried. 7.4, Councilor Long, Library Board Appointment.
Thank you. On October 31st, 2015, Rosemary Mayne's term on the Library Board as Member-at-Large will expire. In anticipation of the upcoming expiration, Ms. Mayne has expressed interest in renewing her three-year term. As the Library Board bylaw stipulates that three to five members-at-large from the community may sit on the board, administration is recommending that Rosemary Mayne's request to renew her term be approved for a three-year period ending October 31st, 2018, which will fall in line with the current practices. Before I make a motion, I'd say I... Pleasure to see Rose coming back to the board. She has experience which some of the rest of us don't, so I'm fully in favor of getting her back on there. So I move that council appoint Rose Mayne to the Town of Dreton Valley Library Board for another three-year term ending October 31st, 2018.
Thank you. We have a motion. Any discussion on this motion? All right, all in favor? That is carried. 7.5, Councilor Schuler, Lockdown Policy, which hopefully will not be activated anytime soon.
Thank you. Since the October 19th, 2014 shooting in Ottawa, there has been a push to recognize the hazards of disgruntled public and employees may pose to all public buildings. We have also received requests from organizations such as the Alberta Gaming and Lottery Corporation to provide them with our lockdown policy for public events held in our facilities. Administration has prepared a municipally-wide lockdown policy to provide guidance for all Town of Dreton Valley facilities to develop site-specific lockdown procedures. Through the use of hazard assessments, this policy provides a template that each facility can use and modify in the development of lockdown procedures specific to their needs. The approval of lockdown policy will require a change in a single paragraph of the Associated Violence in the Workplace Prevention Policy, A0614, allowing for assessment of hazards that would identify the need for a lockdown policy to be implemented. Therefore, I move that council approve the attached lockdown policy, A0615.
Thank you very much, Councilor Schuler. We have a motion before us. Before I call for questions, I just want to add my own comments regarding this. Lockdown policies, of course, have been in effect with school divisions, municipalities, other levels of government for some time now. They are a good idea, and they are responsible. Bit of policy for a variety of reasons. In particular, insurance and other agencies, as indicated in this background, require policies of this nature to be implemented. I do, however, and I appreciate that administration was trying to provide as complete a picture and background as possible. The first sentence of the background, I find wholly objectionable and is in censury and has no place as background for this type of policy. I think it's, it is alarmist. With that, those are my comments. Any comments or questions from council? Councilor Long?
Actually, I'd just like to echo what you said yourself, your worship. I will vote in favor of this, that the AGLC are asking us to, apparently, and they don't take these things lightly, so we'll certainly vote in favor. But I think there's a danger with this kind of thing, that we give out the message that society is becoming more and more perilous, and it's just not borne out by the real statistics happily. So I wouldn't want anybody thinking that Dreton Valley is any more dangerous this year than it was 50 years ago.
Absolutely right. Thank you, Councilor Long. Anything further? All right, we have a motion before us, all in favor? That is carried. Councilor Schuler?
Thank you. I also, excuse me, had a mind, my mind just went off in a different direction altogether. I also recommend that council approve the amended Violence in the Workplace Prevention Policy, A0614.
Thank you, Councilor Schuler. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Thank you very much. Item 7.6, Councilor Bossert.
Thank you, your worship. New swimming pool legislation standards adopted by Alberta Health in July of 2014 require that a swim standard and admission policy be adopted by all public pools. The Park Valley, sorry, the Park Valley Pool has followed this admission practice for the past several years and has created the attached policy for formal adoption. Park Valley Pool is working toward compliance in all policies and structural legislation by the deadline date of November 30th, 2017. The attached admission standard and swimming compliance policy, RC0115, is hereby presented for council's review and consideration. Therefore, I move that council approve the attached admission standard and swimming competency policy, RC0115.
Thank you, Councilor Bossert. Any discussion on this motion? Seeing none, all in favor? That is carried. Item 7.7, Councilor Nado.
Thank you, Mayor. Over the course of the past couple of years, the Town of Dreton Valley has been addressing the current operations of the Total Works Health and Fitness Center with the objectives of enhancing its services to its members and accommodating the programming needs of youth and families. Last year, the Town engaged the Services of Health Systems Group, HSG, to conduct a gap analysis and to produce a report with recommendations to achieve the objectives mentioned above. HSG presented the final draft of its report to council at an early governance and priorities meeting, and the recommendations were reviewed together with council staff and public representation. The Omniplex administration is proceeding to establish a working plan to implement recommendations based on the direction of council. The HSG report is being presented to Town Council for acceptance as information. Therefore, I move that Town Council accept the Total Works Health Fitness Center Operating Plan Report as prepared by Health Systems Group as information.
Thank you, Councilor Nado. Any discussion on this motion? Very well. And it is a motion to receive for information, so this is just the very beginning of the process of considering details of the report. So, with no further comments, all in favor? That is carried. Item addition to the agenda, item 7.8, Councilor Long.
Thank you. Following receipt of a request for funding for $7,200 for the MAC Center located within Frankmaddick High School, Wayne Turner attended the June 24th, 2015 council meeting to further explain the need for this funding from the Town. In an effort to revitalize the MAC Center, which the Town assisted in funding in its original development, the MAC Center Performing Arts Society is seeking support from the Town as well as Brazo County. The Society is further pursuing grant support of $75,000 through the Community Initiatives Program with the province of Alberta, as the CIP grant requires matching funding. The Society is seeking support from the municipalities. Administration has reviewed the application and supporting documentation and recommends that council at this time deny the request, as Town funds for capital undertakings have already been budgeted. However, administration does see value in working with the Society to provide non-financial support for potential grant applications. I've now got four options here, and this may seem a little backwards, but since council hasn't discussed this, I'm going to go with option A, which is council approve the $7,200 funding, although I will not necessarily actually vote in favor of it, just to allow folks to discuss this right now. So I'm going to, so I will now move that council approve funding to the Society in the amount requested.
Thank you very much, Councilor Long. Ms. Dreeson, did you have, on behalf of administration, did you have any, anything you'd like to add to this discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the discussion from administration just dealt with the fact that at this current time, nothing has been budgeted within the 2015 allocation for projects of this nature. It doesn't fit the guidelines underneath the two programs that we do for community events or for sporting abilities. We do have certainly the ability to help them out with grant programs and help them with our database with respect to available grants and sources of funding. But at this time, it goes on the basis of administration as saying that we just don't have anything allocated to, in terms of the budget, anything would have to be a decision of council with respect to drawing out of reserves.
Is there any in-kind support that the Town might consider for this sort of initiative? I'm glad no one's asking me that question, because I don't know the answer.
Based on what the project is about, we're not, we just don't have the resources to be able to accommodate what it is that they're looking for. Certainly, some technical advice might be some of the in-kind contribution that the Town can provide, but beyond that, based on the nature of their project, nothing that comes to mind.
Let me ask Mr. Deal, or Mr. Nadeau, on the basis of your recollection, does this sort of thing, I can't recall, an example on a project of this nature where I think it's being characterized as capital funding? Has that sort of request happened mid-year, you know, after budget is approved and then has been approved by council? And then I have a second question. Why would we characterize this as a capital expenditure when it might also be characterized as an operational expenditure, because it's ongoing maintenance and upkeep?
I think community enhancement grants are the only one I can remember where MLA used to help these kind of projects. But you're also, the ownership of the MAC is still a question. If it's a part of the school operation, then school should be looking after that.
I think they've told us that it is not.
But how could it be when it's on the school...
From the perspective of the MAC Society, they...
And it is on the school property, though.
Yeah.
So there is that, but I don't know how else they can do some fundraising, I suppose. The other thing could be through, they used to run a kitchen at one time for the students, and that was one time making money.
Yeah. So... So, my first question, and maybe I'll try to rephrase it, is based on your historical recollection, when requests of this nature have come after our budget has been set for the year, does provision get made from time to time?
Yeah, council has the prerogative and has done it in the past irrespective of the budget time.
All right, anything further from the council? Counselor Shuler?
Yeah, looking at this, I think the town did put some funds into this center when it first came up, when it was first built, and it is something that I think with any facility at times will need upgrading. I think the ask is really a small ask when they're, you know, looking at over $75,000, you know, for renovations. I think it's a small ask of council to contribute, you know, $7,200 of that overall. And, you know, myself, I would be inclined, you know, to help this organization out with, you know, with this funding to do, you know, I think much-needed upgrades to the facility. If we don't, you know, upgrade facilities, you know, at some point, then they will fall into disarray and not be usable, and this one is utilized by the community, you know, a fair amount. So I think it's just a small price really to pay to keep a facility running that is utilized by the community.
Thank you, Counselor Shuler. Counselor Natto?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just wondering, is there a necessity to have the funds now, because they're applied for the grant, so they're waiting to see if they've received that grant, correct? So why it couldn't be part of our budget discussions, because those start late August, early September? That's really only a month and a half, and if there's a deadline, and that way it can be included as part of our regular budget process and not ad hoc? I'm worried about a little bit of a precedent. We've been very clear about where we're going to discuss those and how they're going to be managed, and I, so I'm just wondering if there's a timeframe. If there's not, and they're still waiting to proceed on their budget, then why can't we include it within our budget process?
Ms. Streason, do you have any information?
The current information that we've been handed has not given us any indication that there's a time set or a set time limit. I know that the CIP grant application has certain deadlines, but they occurred during the course of the year. With respect to this particular project, we haven't been informed in terms of will the project continue if they don't receive all of the funding? Obviously, the grant program is dependent on at least some indication of the ability of the organization to get the matching dollars. Doesn't necessarily mean that you have to have those matching dollars in place, dollar for dollar, but at least to show good evidence that the organization either is on its way, well into its way, to get the funds, or has a plan to get the funds that they find acceptable.
Thank you. Anything further on this? Counselor Natto?
I still don't feel like I have a clear decision of which way I want to go with it, because it sounds like we don't have a clear definition of timeframe. I'm wondering why we can't table it so we have and table it to our budget process. So I'm just wondering, moving forward, I'm concerned if we turn it down now, well, I guess they can reapply later, but is that sending a different message? So that's, I don't want to, I'm all in favor of arts and culture in the community, everybody knows that. However, I'm concerned about it being ad hoc, and I would prefer to see it as part of our regular budgetary process and consultation, and to see how the community feels about it as well. So I just want to do it a little bit more by the book, because I feel like in the past we have been a little bit more ad hoc and reactionary to these things. I'd prefer to see it as part of our regular budget process. So I don't want to say no, but I'm not ready to say yes. How about that?
Ms. Streason?
I think perhaps a recommendation to proceed then might be along the basis of allowing the review by council during the budget process, or at least at a later date, informing the organization that this process is in the works, allowing them the ability, and if I understand, the deadline for the applications, they can put within the application on their budget that it is something that is still pending, in terms of any contribution from the town of Drayton Valley is pending, and during the process of the review, because it quite often takes anywhere up to a three-month process for the officials to review the grant applications, and I know, just from experience, that you can submit additional information as your circumstances change with respect to budget. So if during the process a decision is made, then the MACS organization can go back to the CIP officials and provide them with any update to their budget.
Right, so in terms of Counselor Natto's suggestion, although it didn't come in the form of a motion yet, her suggestion that we might consider tabling it to some future time, I'm concerned that if you're suggesting table it to sometime during the budget process, I don't know that that's going to give the kind of certainty that one required. I would suggest as an immediate measure, if there's a tabling motion, that it be to the next council meeting in order that we can get some questions answered, and from there, there could be a further tabling motion, or it could be dealt with. Does anyone have any comments in that regard? Counselor Shuler?
Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, Mayor, just, I hate to say putting it into our budgetary process, you know, a future date, which could be anything up till...
December.
Well, even beyond, really, because if it's classified as capital, or, you know, it might not be until next March before it gets approved. So I prefer seeing this table to the next council meeting initially, just so we can get some of our answers, you know, that we require, at least along the lines of, you know, is there a deadline that they need, you know, to have the funds by? I do agree with Counselor Natto in the fact that I would prefer seeing it in our budgetary process and be part of, you know, be part of that rather than doing it ad hoc, because I do agree, I hate to set, you know, some other precedent, so from what it sounds like, council has done that in the past anyway, but I would prefer seeing it part of the process. So I would like to find out a little more information along the lines of when, you know, when do they need the funds by or commitment of the funds by? You know, even if they don't require the funds until next year, if we commit to it, we can still then build it into our budget for next year. You know, if we have to commit this year to the funds but not pay them out till next year, we can still put it into the process then and build it into the budget. But I would prefer seeing the tabling motion, you know, go forward to the next council meeting, and I'd be willing to make that motion now.
Very good, thank you. We have a tabling motion which does not call for discussion, so I'll just call the question to table this motion to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. Yeah, what, pardon? Well, no, it's tabling the motion. All right, well, it's both, yes. The motion was made, and so we're tabling that to the next regularly scheduled council meeting. So, all in favor of the tabling motion? That is carried. We have that noted. All right, let's carry on. Item 7.9, Counselor Natto.
Administration has received the attached application for the community event grant of $2,000 from the Drayton Valley Minor Baseball in support for their upcoming Mosquito AA Tier Two tournament set to run from July 23rd to 25th, 2015. Attached are the application form, which indicates that the proposed use of the grant funds would be to provide T-shirts for each of the 85 to 90 tournament participants. The T-shirts would feature the town logo as a sponsor. For the organizers of the tournament to order the shirts in time for the event, the order must be placed by July 16th, 2015. The total community events grant fund is $10,000 for 2015 calendar year. To date, $6,484 has been granted as cash, and $1,664.50 has been granted as in-kind contribution for a total of $8,149.50, for the amount available of $1,850.15. Therefore, I make motion that council approve the grant to the Drayton Valley Minor Baseball Association for the Mosquito Division Tournament on July 23rd through the 25th of 2015 in the amount of $1,850.50.
Thank you, Counselor Natto. Any discussion on this motion? Counselor Natto?
We have done this event in the past, and it was a very successful event, and I thought about either reducing it to allow for more time, but if I reduce it, there's really not a valuable contribution left irregardless, so that was my rationale for the $1,850, so case.
I think that's helpful background for the record, that I think also the reason this has come as an addition to the agenda is completely outside the power of Drayton Valley Minor Baseball. They were just notified of this, I gather, on Monday, that the opportunity to host the event was forthcoming, and so it requires a swift decision on our part. This, distinct from the last agenda item, this particular agenda item has a program that, within which it fits, and as Counselor Natto has pointed out, it has been a successful event in the past which we have participated in. So with that, any further discussion, comments? Counselor Bossert?
I just have to say that I'm pleased that the community is starting to access our community event grant fund and our Roger Coles Memorial Sports Grants. In the past, the community hasn't really applied for these grants, so to see that this, if we do agree to this application, this grant will be fully funded this year, I think is a good indicator that we are actually sponsoring good events in our community.
Anything further? All right, all in favor? That is carried. Sorry, did you have your hand up? Okay, very good. It's carried unanimously. All right, item 7.10, Counselor Shuler?
Thank you, worship. I move that we go in camera at 10:30.
Very good, we are going in camera. All right, we're back. Counselor Shuler?
Yes, I move that we come out of camera at 10:53 a.m.
Thank you. All in favor? That is carried. Counselor Shuler?
Yes, I move that council authorize Mayor Glenn McLean to sign the confirmation letter with Conroy Ross Partners Limited as discussed in camera for the purpose of recruiting a chief administration officer.
Thank you, Counselor Shuler. Any discussion on this motion? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Information items, 8.1, Brazzo Seniors Foundation May Minutes, 8.2, Yellowhead Regional Library Board Meeting Minutes, 8.3, Legacy Project Meeting Notes of June 2015, and 8.4, the Star Catholic News Release. Could I get a motion to receive those? What? Oh, I'm sorry. Where did I? Pardon me? 8.5, RCMP Statistics for May and June 2015, and 8.6, the letter of intent regarding the FCM International Program. I think I've got them all now, have I? Okay. Could I get a motion to receive those items as information, please? Counselor Bossert? All in favor? That is carried. Thank you. Department of Reports, 9.1, Planning and Development. Martine?
Good morning.
Morning.
Jen is not here today, so I'll be doing the report for planning and development.
Sure.
And since our last report, we have issued four new business licenses, and one of which is a new restaurant. Yes, if I can pronounce it, it's Yozakura Japanese Restaurant, and that'll be located at 5120 52nd Avenue. And for development permits issued since the last report, total of 16. We had eight signs, one detached garage, two as-built secondary suites, one demolition of mobile home, one deck and landing, one as-built deck, and one as-built landing, and one as-built veranda. And that's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. 9.2, Engineering, Transportation, and Sustainability is Ron left us for good, or for the day?
Yes, we can maybe pull up.
Sure, we'll carry on. 9.3, Community Services and FCSS.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple things quickly to report on. Just really busy within our department, working on the 2015 capital projects, and of course, already into the thick of planning for 2016 in terms of the capital projects being identified there. In addition, looking at, one of the items, of course, is the Recreation Culture Master Plan, and putting the request for proposal out there at the present time to have consultants come in and provide their proposal with respect to the Recreation Culture Master Plan. So again, this will, we will be asking the community for their involvement on this product as well. And just very final comment, just fingers crossed, I might be jinxing myself yet again, but we do have a new Recreation and Culture Manager that has, that has, yeah, hold my hand here. Third time's a charm, right? Lee Adam Nels, who is in Grand Cash at the present time, will be coming here early August to start his position. Cannot wait. Lee Adam Nellis. August 10th is his current start date.
Very good. Fingers crossed. Thank you very much. Ron, Engineering, Transportation, and Sustainability.
Okay. Well, first, just a little update on the projects. We did, I probably mentioned before, we already awarded that pressure development contract installed in the pressure, oh, sorry, pressure relief valves, but they're still waiting for...
Sorry, where are they to be?
They're kind of like in the 43rd Avenue Beckett Road area, that kind of thing, the east, kind of the eastern part of town, heading down the hill, kind of thing. So they're still waiting for the units to arrive, and, but they still hope to have that project complete by the end of September. The 43rd Ave project, the extension onto the Ring Road or Township Road 73, we just entered it yesterday, and we have a closing date around, I think it's July 28th, the end of the month. No, we have a completion date next year. Sorry, I don't have it with me, but in order to get a good price, we allowed up till next year. Hopefully, they'll still complete it this year. Airport repairs, that's where we have to mill out some of the asphalt. That was awarded to Border, and it should be done... That was awarded to Border, and it should be done by the end of this month. The water treatment plants, they're still figuring in September sometime, it should be complete and open.
That's, sorry, on the water treatment plant, I think last we heard they would begin, they anticipated beginning the commissioning process in sometime in July, and with a hard opening in September?
Sorry, yeah, I don't have a hard update, but I can check into that. I think I heard the same thing, but I-
So it sounds like what you're saying is-
It sounds like it's on track.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it's on track. Fifty Street Repairs, that's underway, and it should be complete by September. That's the Highway Twenty-two and Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Beckett Road Connection, that was a Parkway contract, and Border's doing the paving, and it'll be done by the end of July. Brewham Drive, border paving. The paving's complete on Brewham Drive, and they're just doing cleanup. That's pretty much it for the, what I have for the engineering. As far as sustainability there, you all met Dinette at the last meeting there, and she's been very busy sending out Monday morning newsletters and stuff like that. I think you guys are probably getting that too, are you? Sustainability ideas, and she's been extremely busy, enthusiastic, so.
I was away for the no-meat week, but, yeah.
Okay, good, that's it for me.
Thank you very much. Yeah, sorry, Deb, Councilor Bossert?
Ron, I wonder if you could share with council a little bit about your findings in the sewer trunk flush that you, some of the news you shared with the Waste Management Committee? Just what your finding in the trunk line that is unusual?
Yeah, so that was the, that was the sanitary, I believe sanitary trunk. It's just that, it seems that people have been depositing things into it, like industrial things into it, and we've had to been doing cleanup, and it's costing us quite a bit on the cleanup part, right? The hydrovacuuming and that sort of thing.
In the-
And I'm trying to remember if it's the storm or the sanitary, I can't remember. Do you recall? Storm, sorry, I was wrong.
The south one.
The south one. Yeah, that's right, sorry, it's the storm, it's the storm one. But I guess the only point I was trying to make there is, like, every year we have to do a little bit of cleanup. This year, we have to do a lot, and we'll probably have to do more next year. And like, we're still okay. We still have, you know, lots of funds to cover it in different areas, kind of thing. It's just that, on this particular item, this year, we're doing more than typically in the past, right? Because I think people are, I don't know what's going on, it's like there's cloth and everything else that's being sucked out of it, right? And sedimenting up and that sort of thing.
So when you say industrial waste, are you talking about used oil, that kind of thing, or are you talking about-
They found a lot of rags, like rags, cloth. We don't really know where it's coming from.
For heaven's sake.
And so, and then that traps more sediment, and then that can lead to blockages and that sort of thing. So I guess all, this came up at the Waste Management Committee the other day, and the point, the point I was trying to make is, we're having to do several weeks of cleanup this year, rather than, you know, a couple of weeks, kind of thing. And we're okay, you know, we're okay budget-wise, because we have money in there for repairs and maintenance and all this other type of thing, but it's just that we're spending, this is a problem, right? Industry, or whoever it is, somehow getting rid of cloth-
So perhaps there's an opportunity for public education-
Yeah.
-around this, and I would just ask the administration to take note of that for when we do have the new communications coordinator on staff, we'll have that person work with you to develop some messaging, to provide that public education opportunity.
Right, right.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Where are we? Nine point four, Protective Services. Chief Thompson? Chief Thompson is away. All right, nine point five, Legislative Services. Chandra?
I do actually have something today. Just wanting to make council and the public aware that after the first reading of the community standards by law, I've now managed to pare it down from twenty-six pages to three pages of highlights, so I'm thinking that's pretty good. It will be available on our website for the public to review, and I'm hoping to get lots of comments. We're also including it on the town page, and anybody can contact me or Jen Stone, and we can provide copies of it. We'll leave some at the front counter for anybody who walks in and wants to review it, so anybody who would like to have input, that would be greatly appreciated.
Excellent.
The other thing that I have to report on is, in terms of going back to being the deputy returning officer for the by-election, unfortunately, I do have to report that candidate Rye has not submitted his campaign disclosure statement. I've made several attempts to obtain that from him, but haven't received it, and there was a time period in which it needed to be provided, and it hasn't. So I'm required to report to council formally that that has not been received.
Is there action that the legislation requires of council at this point?
No, it's just a matter of making council aware of it.
Thank you very much. All right, Economic Development, Communications, Marketing, Information Services. Nessan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. In terms of Information Services and the Emergency Services, I attended the Alberta Emergency Alerting System, which is a new system that's been implemented by Alberta Emergency Services. And basically, it's the announcement that goes out over the radio and television, so we had training in that with our safety officer. So both of us attended that at the county office. In terms of Economic Development, Communication, Marketing, there should be some new information coming to council's inbox shortly, some announcements. And in terms of the Canada Day and the app that we announced, we have, at this moment in time, seven hundred and ninety-two downloads. There weren't many downloads from Canada Day, but one thing we did notice that spiked on Canada Day was the use of the Events Page, where people were checking out the Events Page and the news items. Those two items on our website and on our app were the most hit by people wanting to know what was happening. So we have, off that, three hundred and eighty-five updates, because we added the reporter problem. On that one, reporter problem, people have started using it. The issues are being generated and sent to the appropriate departments, and they're being attended to, and people do get feedback as to whether the problem has been addressed or not. So that is being monitored, and we will report to council on the number of issues that are reported in various sectors.
Very good.
The annual report was sent out two weeks ago, and they should be in most households by now. And the results from the Canada Day questions have been compiled and sent off to council. I hope everybody has received it. If you haven't, let me know, and we will make sure they get back to you. The three top issues, activities for kids, more facilities and upgrades, and culture and recreation and parks. So we just looked at that, and so that was the important issues there. Of course, we're looking at also starting the budget process online, so that's going to be discussed by council, and we're going to plan for launching that and getting public engagement at the various venues, as we did last year.
Right.
And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Mr. Deal?
Your worship, the town is looking pretty good. Trees look good, everything is cut, and red posts are being painted, so is along the walkways, so they're taken care of, and that's what's happening. And other than that, the airport, the master plan is being done by the fire department, the fire chief, and along with that, the new RFP for the airport will go. It might bring us more interest from different players to revitalize the airport or sustain the airport. That plan is underway, so there will be RFP going on pretty soon, I'll be bringing to council. So that's a very interesting project, and I'll wait till the fire chief comes up and give you the update on that area. And I think Fifty Street, there's some land acquisition issues there, and if they were solved, looks like there might be a little hope, then you will see that Service Road might be built still this year. But the lawyers haven't okayed for us to move into that area yet, from Tim Hortons North. So that's where the holdup is. And other than that, basically, we've been working with the different stakeholders, with Telus and Norquest, to get CETC plan finalized, business plan finalized, had meetings with Adco and Warehouser, trying to deal with the waste issue with the Warehouser and our project with CCMC. So those are the normal things going on on an ongoing basis. That's all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Council Reports, ten point one, ten point two, Councilor Bossert?
Ten point one is still in Frankfurt. It's been a little quieter in the last three weeks, which is nice, so we can be outside enjoying our wonderful summer holiday. First, want to acknowledge the Primary Care Network, who had their grand opening June twenty-fifth. They've moved into the building just north of that restaurant, three nights. So they're in the old Vermilion Building. They have a number of offices in there for medical specialists, primary mental health, nutritionists, and other medical services. So the office there is looking beautiful, very well utilized, and look forward to them rolling out some of the other mandates that they have for the PCN here in Drayton Valley. Of course, July first was Canada Day, and as always, it was an incredibly well-planned and well-attended event here in Drayton Valley. Always a fun day when I get to ride in a convertible and throw frisbees at Councilor Long. And I hope that the community really enjoyed the day. I appreciate all that came to the Drayton Valley Town, Town of Drayton Valley table, took the time to fill out our poll for the day, and congratulations to the young lady that won a mini iPad for her participation. Council really appreciates the input that we receive from the public at the events that we attend, and we take that information and see how the responses that we receive can be applied to different programs and budgeting items that we work on throughout the year. On July sixth, I attended the Homelessness and Poverty Reduction Strategy Team, and along with other items, we have been working on what we're calling Homeless for a Night. In late September, we're hoping to have an evening where we invite people from the general public to camp out in a schoolyard and experience what it's like to be homeless for a night. We are hoping to partner with United Way out of Edmonton and have a poverty simulator. So that's something to look forward in the fall, just for general public awareness of what it might be like to be homeless in the fall in Drayton Valley. We are also starting to work on our Stage Three of our Emergency Sheltering Plan, which is looking at hostel models that we have in our province, and we've been approached with information from two YMCA groups, one out of Edmonton and one out of the Edmonton Region for Western Canada, and they appear to be very willing and able to come forward and give us guidance in hosteling plans and share their information and wisdom with us. So we look forward to working on that in this next season of time, and hopefully come up with a solution for transitional housing in Drayton Valley. And I also attended the Waste Management Meeting on July tenth. Mr. Fraser alluded to some of the issues that we spoke about at that meeting, but one of the other issues that we are evaluating is our spring and fall roundups that we offer to the community, how to approach community refuge pickup semiannually, and just evaluating how that can be improved for our general public, as well as being a better use of our employee resources. So that's something else that we've been working on. Other than that, it's just been the regular meetings of council and GMP, and look forward to a quieter rest of July, it looks like. That's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilor Nado?
Thank you, Mayor. I really don't have very much to report, so I'll just kind of leave it at that. The only thing really that I've attended since council, due to vacation and so on, is the opportunity to have the delegation at the County Council last week in regards to the RCMP and the Tri Service Center Initiative, and had K-Division come out and talk to it. But I did report at our last GMP on it, so that's my report.
Very good. Councilor Long?
It was impressive, turn of speed. On June thirtieth, along with Councilor Wheeler, I took a tour of the RCMP detachment at the invitation of the Staff Sergeant, just to have a look at some of the space issues that they're having. I don't think there's any pending action to be taken there, but there's something to be aware of, that as the staffing level gets higher, the space gets smaller, obviously. Canada Day was great this year. Canada Day's always great, but I particularly enjoyed this year, just the lean mean team of the three of us working the table there. A great chance to talk to folks and have a good time, and the weather's always good, so I loved it. Lots of leftover candy, but that's, you know. And other than that, a couple days ago, I attended the FCSS tour, which takes in a number of programs that FCSS puts on throughout the community, so we'll go around and have a look and see what's going on there, and where the money's getting spent, if you like, so it's always enlightening. And yesterday, we had another meeting of our Legacy Committee, which we're starting to get a little traction and develop an action plan, which I think you'll be hearing about later, to get something going, basically try and chime in with the sixtieth anniversary of Drayton Valley in 2017.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Councilor Schuler?
Thank you, worship. Just a couple things that weren't mentioned. July sixth, attended the SBI Bioenergy Groundbreaking in Edmonton with Councilor Long and Mr. Deal, which is interesting. SBI is a company that we have had some conversations with, with CETC and Biomile stuff, so we went to show our support for a project that has been a number of years in the making, and kind of exciting that, you know, they're moving to the next stage, which is a pilot plant right in Edmonton. So it gives me some measure of confidence that, you know, we are on the right track, because these projects take, you know, a number of years to get going, so seeing that, you know, some of these are still moving forward was very encouraging. On July seventh- On July 7th, Counselor Nado and I attended, and of course, Mr. Deal, attended the RCMP presentation to Brazos County, which was interesting, to say the least. We, going in, we thought we were attending a meeting with Brazos County Council and the RCMP and it turned out that it was a Brazos County Council meeting and this was just a presentation from the RCMP. So it wasn't what we expected it to be, but it was, it was very interesting, anyway. July 10th-
Please continue.
Despite the incredibly rude inter, interruption. If you really don't understand what I said, just listen a little bit closer and maybe we'll-
Tell Siri we all have that trouble from time to time.
I'll try to announce it a little better. On July 10th, did a tour with Tom Davis, who's the Assistant Deputy Minister of the Environment, and took him on tour of the CETC and I believe he was very impressed and very interested in the project. So I'm hoping this will result in some fruits of our labor to, to push some other things forward. We had some pretty specific asks of him and we'll see, see where that goes. And then as Counselor Long mentioned on the 14th, the Legacy Project, and I will give a, an update to Council in, at GMP on that, on where we're sitting and where we're going. And I'm going to, I know this, this portion is for, for us to let the community know what we've been up to and what, you know, Council's been doing between Council meetings, but I'm going to digress a little bit. And the reason why I'm going to digress is I'm really, really getting tired of Brazos County misleading the citizens, their own citizens, as well as those of Drayton Valley. And I'm referring to the full-page ad that they put in the last week's paper and, you know, just indicating that they've granted to Drayton Valley and Breton a total of $7.9 million up to the end of next year. I don't really remember seeing too many grants coming from Brazos County and I don't think we've asked for any grants coming for next year. And I do want to point out that some of the things that they've listed here are definitely not grants and some of them don't even come to Drayton Valley. For example, the RCMP staff support is paid to the RCMP, it's not paid to Drayton Valley, it's not paid to Breton. Just going, looking through some of this, the Elnor Pickup Arts Center went to Elnor Pickup Art Society, it did not come to Drayton Valley, to the Town of Drayton Valley. You know, this is misleading to the residents and really, it almost comes down to an outright lie. And they, they really need to, you know, stop telling people that they're giving us money. Whether they're saying it's granting it or giving it to us, that's just not the truth. They're paying for services and, you know, those services are in respect to their residents' usage of facilities. So I'm just, I'm, I normally don't respond to these things, but it's getting to the point where I feel I must start telling the residents out there, whether they're Brazos County residents or the Town of Drayton Valley residents, that Brazos County Council and Administration are deceiving you. And, you know, they, they have to start to step up. And with that, that's the end of my report.
That is a fulsome report. And with regard to your last comments, of course, I don't think you'll get much disagreement around the table. It is misleading. It's wildly inaccurate and designed to, to create a different perception than reality, actually, the reality that exists. And, and so we carry on with respect to our own public, the people of Drayton Valley, and we serve them to the best of our abilities. We continue to communicate with them as to what is actually occurring and, and, you know, I, I have a great deal of sympathy for those members of the public, town and county alike, who, who take umbrage, as you have, with, with misrepresentations of various kinds. So with that, thank you for your report. We, over the last three weeks, I've been away visiting family in, you know, another part of the country and, and a sick relative and, so I haven't actually had the opportunity to be here for much of the, the fun activities that July normally brings. I spoke with Lorna Luchak from the Lions Club recently with respect to the parade and I want to convey to Council her thanks for those who were able to participate in the parade. And it was a, by all accounts, a very successful event and, and sounded as though you enjoyed yourselves and, and thanks so much for, for stepping up when others of us couldn't be there. So with that, I have nothing further to report. I want to thank members of Council, particularly Deputy Mayor Schuler, Counselor Nado, Counselor Long, who've all stepped in and participated in various activities on my behalf over the last couple of weeks. So with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn. Counselor Long, all in favor? That is carried, we're adjourned.